Okay, we'll call to order a special meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. Today is Monday, February 1st at 5:30 PM. And first item on the agenda is present to speak. Looks like we have one individual with us. Since she wants to speak, you should be able to unmute yourself and do so. Seeing no one present to speak, there will be a 6:30 Board of Selectmen meeting. So feel free to come back there and share your thoughts with us. Okay, so we'll move on to reviewing remaining budget departments. Excuse me, as you can imagine, a snow day does not really work well into budget season. So we won't have all of these to review because we don't have Donna with us. And she wasn't able to complete some items for us tonight to have a big picture. But she will have a full first run of our budget for next Monday's meeting for sure. So what I'll go over, and I sent you an email, I apologize late today, I am going to share my screen. Hopefully I can share the screen. We can make it possible. That way we may be able to see it a little bit larger. Recognize it is in Zoom. I mean in Word. Okay.
Are you finding it?
Let me try now. It says host disabled participant screen. And so if you go to the share screen, click the up carrot, you should be able to choose multiple participants along the bottom. It's on the bottom.
Manage participants.
There's participants, chat, share screen.
I don't have a share screen. Oh, hold on, hold on, sorry. You should be able to now.
Okay. Okay, so this is the document I sent you all earlier, and hopefully you can see that I'm going to move my. I can't see any of you, so someone needs to speak. Hopefully Heather can catch you. All right, so I'll start with, I'll start at the top of this page. So our town council, so that's our legal fees for the year. So I'm going, and I'm going to leave those flat. So 18.5 for general town council, 3,000 for labor attorney, 10,000 for land use, and 500 for miscellaneous. You can see this past, the first column is what we used in 1920. We did go over budget, we were projecting, tracking a lot more than we had thought. So we had transferred line items towards the end of the fiscal year. And then we didn't end up needing as much as we had anticipated. Most of that was COVID-related attorney issues. So things that I don't think we'd see again in this fiscal year. And you can see the middle column is to date. So 18.5 is what we budgeted. 18.5 was the adjusted, the middle column in the third column in the middle, where you see under town council. This is 25.43. I'll move my cursor here so you can see. Right here. That's what we spent to date since July 1. So we, I actually spoke to our attorney, I want to say last week for the first time in quite a while. So when we don't have to consult with him, it's good, but we never know what's going to come up. And land use, we've had some issues with land use, and that's where you're seeing those. So we're tracking probably under, but again, you know, any legal situation could arise. I would not want to cut this. If we did, we would be going back to the Board of Finance if we didn't have money within our operating budget. And we had a legal expense we needed to handle. Any questions about legal fees?
Yes.
Yes, John.
On labor attorney.
Yes.
Are we, are we planning on?
We're negotiating this year. I anticipate we will be negotiating this year, yes.
So are we sure that will be enough?
Yes, I feel like we will have enough of what we have in the general council. We can move within those line items. So I do feel like we will have enough.
Okay.
But again, you know, the farther it goes out, we could potentially run over. But we are tracking well under this fiscal year. I say that knock on wood, again, legal isn't something that we plan for, for the most part.
Okay.
Any other questions about legal? So I'll move on to town. The next chunk is town hall operations. Again, the first three columns, and I apologize, I didn't put the header in when I snipped this from my Excel sheet. The first three columns are 1920, previous fiscal year. Middle is our current 2019, I'm sorry, 2021. And the far column are budgets for the current, the 2021, 22. I'm all snow day out today. So there, you'll see several blank entries here, and those were entries that Donna will have for us next week. The others are budgeted through our, my office. So right now, maintenance and miscellaneous. I'm still keeping flats at the 21,000. Computer expense, this is not complete. Donna does have some items, plus I have an additional item. This is our IT services plus some software fees and things. So this 111, 748 currently represents our portion of the Novus expenses. And we split, if you recall, it's a shared service with the Board of Ed. We pay for 53%, and the Board of Education pays 47%. So this 111, 748 is our 40, I'm sorry, our 53% of the entire budget. In addition to this 111, I do know, and I can talk to you a little bit about something I've been working on with them. We've been planning for, that's taken a little bit more time with some of our issues left over when we changed software, I'm sorry, IT companies. And that's the change over to Microsoft 365. So we currently have licensing issues, and I know I've talked to you about these in the past. We have not yet been able to correct them. It's a much larger project than we had first anticipated. And so the correcting those is that right now we're mixing our licensing with the Board of Ed, which means they are paying for the licensing, the town is not. It's a no-no. If we were to be turned into Microsoft, we would have no Microsoft Office. And that would be a real problem outlook is how we get our email and all of the programs that we use. So part of that is correcting licensing, which means we begin paying licensing fee we have not yet paid. We'd be either rebuilding, rebuilding existing hardware or moving on to a sustainable cloud hardware. So we have two options, our own physical hardware, which comes with a risk, or cloud hardware. And then creating a new domain to clean up issues with the old domain that would improve network and user controls. So we would move to a willingtonct.gov, and the BOE would stay on willingtonct.org. Hold on to your hats, because the cost of all of that is just over $37,000 in year one. And most of that is time. This would be a project for IT services and one second, okay. And so most of that cost is their time to do this project. So for example, the cloud domain and infrastructure would be just over 15,000 in time, budgeted hours, 60 hours from a tier four individual and 50 hours from a tier one individual from Novus. So it's a lengthy project, and then there are subscription fees and annual fees for that cloud. And then to the, there's a breakdown of each project and annual fees that would recur. Moving forward into year two, we would have six, we'd have about 14,000 of recurring, $14,028 of recurring fees. That's the licensing for the Microsoft offices and the cloud hosting and the infrastructure hosting. If we had our own hardware, we'd be looking at, instead of $7,000 of that infrastructure, it would be about 4,000. But every four to five years, we would need to replace our hardware. And then there's obviously risk if anything were to happen to the hardware. John, Liza, you may not, but John, I think you were on the board. When we had the flood and lost a server in finance, that was significant to replace and caused significant issues. There's risks if we lose power, there's and Novus will come in and speak to us about what they perceive as those risks. My, after speaking with them, I feel our best bet is to go with the cloud hosting. It really lessens the risk, certainly with our older facilities. There's certainly more risk of damage to physical hardware. And so either way, there's about a $2,000 difference between going cloud and going with our own. So it's minimal, but there is a difference in, in cost there. So this 111 is going to include that 37,000 increase. Again, that's one year for that large increase. And then some additional fees, which Donna will show us when she meets with us next week. The next increase I have is under TOB postage. Postages, yes, go ahead, John.
All right, okay, so just so I understand this correctly, the budgeting, the 111, and then there are going to be more.
Yes, so you can see this year it was 120. The 111 is just our piece of Novus in the computer expenses. There are other annual softwares that we pay for, and I don't have all of those totals yet. Donna has those for us.
Probably should have those next week, right?
She will, she should have all of those next week.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, so I've left telephones flat. The TOB postage, we've increased postage as it's going up one cent, or it went up one cent on January 1. So we'll budget for that increase for next year. There additionally could be an increase as a result of some pending changes in the legislature for absentee voting. We saw a change in absentee voting this year, which meant more male costs. And so we could see more postage costs, excuse me, out of the town clerk's office than we would normally. I don't believe to the extent originally anticipated. Certainly a presidential year is a larger turnout typically than other years. But we'll see a cost that we don't typically see. But this will cover that one cent cost and those increases. Those are the only of the line items you can see in here that I have increased. Everything else flat. Yes, John?
Did I forget something here on the fire alarm monitoring?
Oh, oh, my apologies. The fire alarm monitoring, I think I spoke about this TN is, will no longer be doing our monitoring as of June 30, so we will have to go with a new company. And so the first quote we received was from a state-approved vendor. And it would be one panel instead of two separate panels. And so 720 would be the total cost. Currently, we pay 500 between fire and security. And so 720 would be what we would pay combined. And right now, we put it in one line item because it will be just one, potentially one bill to one vendor as opposed to separate. We have a fire panel and security panels now. This would be one new combined panel.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I've talked briefly with other companies just to kind of get an idea. And we're going to be looking, depending on who we go with, about the same cost. We knew 250 was a bargain. But because they're no longer going to be in the monitoring business, we have no choice but to change vendors. So you see a decrease in one line item of 250 and an increase in the other line item. So it works out to be $220 net increase. Right, so it's not a full picture of what this department will be. You're still seeing a 20% decrease because there are some significant costs not showing in our budget yet. Town Hall Operations, which is the old town hall. We will get more clear electricity, heat and oil numbers from Donna, and we're leaving the maintenance at $2,000. Knock on wood, we've been fortunate this year and have not had much going on over there, which I worried about, knowing that no one had been in and around the building, public works checks on the building regularly, and have not seen any issues. The next department is our consulting engineers. So between land use and public works, we use either our town engineer, public works users, or land use often will go out with him or a different engineer. This year, Board of Finance cut those budgets from 10,000 to 7,500. We had asked for 10,000, and they cut them both back. And we have, you know, we have a steep project on the books that we'll need to be working with our engineer on. And land use has some projects in the works currently. So we'll see them use a significant portion of their 7,500. When CIP met, they cut some projects out, hoping we would use them within our operating budget, specifically for engineering of Lisker Road culvert that needs to be replaced. That's a 45, estimated $4,500 for engineering for that. So knowing that we'd have that to come right off the top of our engineering next year, I'm suggesting we go back up to $10,000, which is our typical ask. And again, it depends, especially the land use, what projects come and go. I know Troy is working with Carl on our bridges projects. So we may see an increase with him. Again, there are things that come up during the year that are not planned or expected. And so this is one of those numbers that's based on really more of an average. There's not always set items that we have planned out, although I do know that we have two steep projects. So depending on their carryover and reuse, so I recommend we go back to $10,000. And that's what I was worried about when Board of Finance cut that last year, was that we wouldn't know that we needed until we need it. The engineering, the legal, I don't go on that. And then the cemetery, it's works like a grant. They get a $2,000 budget, they get the entire thing. And so I'm asking for the same $2,000, no increase or decrease in cemetery association. Our insurance, we're expecting no more than an 8.2% increase in insurances. I'm hoping before we get through budget season, we'll know what that is. But as you recall, it doesn't often happen before we're done. Sometimes we get that final number, which is why this year we have a favorable in our insurance line item. I can tell you that we will leave unemployment. These will be numbers Donna will be working on for us next week. She's going to true up the fire main, compensated absences, unemployment, employee insurance, pension in our insurances. We will leave employment, unemployment at 1,000. We know of no specific claims. It's possible due to COVID, we'll see some claims. We had several this current fiscal year for unemployment. Although we did protest many of them as they were folks who were no longer employed with us, who left, voluntarily left our employ. But because of COVID, nothing was happening at DOL. So we had one that we protested from March and just had the first hearing on Thursday. So they are just starting to get around to those things, if you can even imagine. All right, so that brings us to general discussion. We do not have a full budget picture. We know right now our biggest increase, you're going to see an increase in the town office operations because of the computers. And we know right now we have a significant increase in public works request, at least, right? We asked our public works director to bring us what he needs, what he feels is necessary to run that department and get things done and done correctly. And that's come with a significant increase. And what I would like to do on a normal day is for us to be able to talk about that. But because of the situation with weather and our public works department out there working, I would recommend we, you know, we could talk about that on our own. But I really would like them to be able to be here to answer questions for us and weigh in on that and the timing of our meeting. And the current snowstorm really doesn't work with that. So if we had some questions, we wanted to send off to any department head, once we've looked at theirs. I think I had asked you for that last time. We can do that. Thoughts, questions? I think this will move easier when we have a full picture to look at next week.
That's what I was just going to say, like, there's not too much to discuss without the full, the, the final draft numbers. Until then, we don't know exactly what we're looking at and where we might, you know, where we might have room to cover other areas and where we're going to need to say this needs to get cut back significantly. So, you know, I don't know, I don't have any more information now than I did during each individual presentation because I don't see the big picture yet.
I agree. I think it'll be important for us to see, you know, what is our overall increase? What do those dollars look like? And it'd be important to then take a look back at each department. I will tell you, we're seeing a slight increase in the overall grand list at our next meeting. I'll report to you the information that was shared just yesterday from the assessor as he filed the grand list. So it's not significant, but there is an increase. So we'll look at that as part of the big picture when we look at the full run. John, your thoughts?
Um, yeah, I'd like to know a little bit more about the consulting engineers because that seems like a large increase. Two years ago, that 10,000 obviously was justified. It's dropped quite a bit. I don't know what's going to go on next year.
So the figure was dropped this year because Board of Finance said, you don't know if you're going to need it. And, and we hadn't, you know.
Well, I mean, already, and what's already been spent.
I can tell you what's already been spent. If you're looking at the land use, Mike Demato, our zoning agent, has already laid out the things that they think could. I'm going to stop sharing here for a moment. The items, because he and I discussed this last week. And they still have two invoices that are in progress that aren't reflected in the current balance. We're looking at funding for a lots of design, which we'll speak about at our next meeting, you'll hear about. So if there are anything unexpected that come up, comes up from that, and they need anything to absorb that cost. Loves is still a project that's out there. It's likely they could submit their permits before June, and that would require engineering reviews as well as site plan reviews for wetlands and PCC are done on as, as needed basis. So there's some potential for them to use more of their budget than they have currently. So already, they will, the 437 doesn't reflect invoices that we're not seeing. They have the Loves project, and we have a lots of project out there, so could, could use some of those funds. So I think you'll see these numbers get closer to budget. You can see in 1920, we had spent pretty close to that 10,000. So I argued quite heavily that they not cut from 10,000 to 75 at Board of Finance, but it was a Board of Finance decision. Knowing right off the top that we need to do this Lisker Road out of our budget and not out of CIP is 4,500 of our engineering dollars will already be encumbered on July 1. So if we, you know, don't increase it back to $10,000, then we're left with very little funds for planning purposes.
Okay.
So can I ask, there was, so you said that there's an anticipated, I don't, I don't remember how you phrase it, but our budget, our incoming funds is a little bit more than we had anticipated for taxes and.
Oh, our grand list.
Grand list, thank you.
Yes.
And then I remember in conversations last year, or maybe it was the year before, there was a certain amount of money that Board of Finance gave back into the working budget because we were over the, like, the rainy day fund that we're supposed to have.
Right.
So where in all of that is, are we in that conversation? Do we know where we stand right now with, with the Board of Finance and?
Yes, so the, and I apologize, because we're meeting this forum, I don't have a physical copy of the report that the auditors gave to Board of Finance at their last meeting. But we do show that we're up over the typical amount, the, the amount that Board of Finance, they set a threshold between eight and 12%. And our current rainy day fund, our reserve fund is up, our general fund is up over that.
It's over the 12.
It is. So it is possible Board of Finance could use some of that revenue to balance the budget. There's also CIP. And CIP is another dollar that goes into the selectmen's budget, and CIP is not done.
Right.
One of the things I'm proposing to change about the budget process for next year is that we complete CIP earlier. So they are not running simultaneously. The, the stress on our finance department and all of those parties who are attending multiple meetings a week is, is a lot. And that number goes into our budget. So to give us a full picture, we're still going to, we're not going to have a completely full picture until CIP is done. So I'm proposing next year that we complete that process in October and November so that we have that number before we sit down with our budget. It will already be in place. So that's up to the Board of Finance, whether or not they use those dollars to offset the budget. And they're having those discussions, they were just presented at their, I think it was January 21st meeting from the auditor. So they were able to see some of those numbers, and they'll have the, I believe it's, it's either the week before we present, budget calendar out here, or maybe the week we present. The revenue projections will be presented to Board of Finance at that time. They'll look at all state fundings. So the Board of Selectmen budget is set to be presented to Board of Finance on Thursday, March 4. At that same meeting will be our budget, CIP, which dollars are in our budget and the revenue. And so they'll get a full revenue projection then. And we hope that, you know, we'll have a much clearer picture from the state. February is when the governor's budget is supposed to come out. And hopefully we have a clear picture of what state funding will be receiving. There has not been much discussion at all, one way or the other. Haven't really heard anything out of Hartford to see where we're at. And so part of that revenue discussion will be the grand list that was just filed. So I, I'm hoping before we sit down Monday night, Donna will have it. But for sure on Monday night, we'll be looking at a full picture. We will get it to you as soon as she's able. We will get it to you as soon as she's able to do so. I will tell you that the coronavirus relief funds took a lot, a lot of time between the schools and the town. And with new software and the challenges of that, that's not typical. Everything about this budget season is atypical. The way in which we're meeting and the amount of work that's. Come on our finance department since then. And then throw in the snowstorm right in the middle of it, and it makes it all fun. So certainly if you have any questions or concerns about any of the departments, I'd encourage you to get those over to Heather. And we can share them with department heads so they can be prepared with some answers to your comments and your questions. Before we meet on Monday, next Monday, the eighth. We have. We have a meeting scheduled. The February, I think just next Monday, and then Tuesday, the sixteenth, we have one scheduled, I believe. Prior to our meeting. And we'll meet as many times as we have to in order to approve a budget to go to Board of Finance before March four.
Can you remind me, February eighth, is that a six thirty? Because we don't have a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Or is, okay.
It's a six thirty. At that time, we need to move that time. We can certainly look at that.
I'm just going to make sure I have that reflected in my calendar accurately here.
All right. So if we have nothing further to discuss now. I will happily move to adjourn at six oh two.
One second.
Okay, all of us in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, so meeting adjourned, so we'll stop the recording.